Okay, good morning. It is eight thirty-two. We're calling the January meeting of the Public Safety Commission to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner De Maris.
Present.
Commissioner Munoz.
Present.
Commissioner Cervantes.
Present.
Commissioner G.
Present.
Commissioner Alseroff is absent, and Chair Donnelly.
Present. All right, Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you.
First order of business, do we have any public comment today?
We have not received any public comment, and we do not have any participants on Zoom.
Okay. Let's move on to approve the minutes of the previous meeting from December. Was there any edits or notes that anyone had after reviewing? No?
No.
In that case, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
Approve.
Walter makes a motion. Can I get a second? All right, and let's have a roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner De Maris.
I was not present, so I'll abstain.
Commissioner Munoz.
Approve.
Commissioner Cervantes.
Approve.
Commissioner G.
Approve.
And Chair Donnelly.
I was also not present.
Okay.
So I can vote to approve, so that we have forum after reviewing them.
Yes, if you are comfortable after reviewing them and voting, you are welcome to.
Okay, so our first order of business after that is election of a new chair and vice chair. So the process is fairly simple. We've got a script. The first thing is, are there any nominations for chair? Are there any volunteers for chair? Walter would like to be chair. Anyone else? Okay, so I will nominate Walter Cervantes for chair. Okay, can we have a motion to accept the nomination?
A motion to accept the nomination of Walter Cervantes as chair.
And then a second for the nomination? We'll have Walter's second, and now let's take a roll call vote for Commissioner Cervantes.
Commissioner De Maris.
In favor, approve?
Either one, yeah. Commissioner Munoz.
In favor.
Commissioner Cervantes.
Approve.
Commissioner G.
In favor.
And Chair, soon to be Commissioner, Ed Donnelly.
Approve. The gavel is yours. We also need to elect a vice chair. Is there anyone that would like to be nominated for vice chair or has a nomination for vice chair?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is Commissioner Watson, is she?
She's rolling off the commission.
She's rolling off the commission.
Yeah, so the folks who are here today, Commissioner Alseroff is still on board.
Okay.
He's not present today.
Did you know, did he express any interest since, or, and I know Commissioner G, also, did I hear you say you're also leaving? Is that correct? No?
I don't think that, I don't think I'm leaving the.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if Commissioner Alseroff had expressed.
But we have someone in the works for a new commissioner, right? I heard.
The mayor will review applicants and decide.
Would you go over the roles of the assistant chair?
The vice chair is fairly straightforward. It's just to run the meetings when the chair is not.
I'd like to nominate Armando.
You'll accept? Okay.
I will accept.
So can we have a motion to nominate Armando?
I motion to nominate Armando.
My second.
A second, and let's take a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner De Maris.
In favor.
Commissioner Munoz.
In favor.
Commissioner G.
In favor.
Commissioner Donnelly.
In favor.
And Chair Cervantes.
In favor.
Are we on the next agenda item? Okay, so the next agenda item, and again, Happy New Year. I think I've expressed that to all of you coming in, and again, thank you for your service in 2024. The next order of business is approving, or at least discussing, the draft work plan for 2024. It's pretty straightforward, and I think the only, Chief Slinski's running a little late, but in preparing this, I think the most important thing that we want to kind of emphasize is these items are kind of placeholder items for 2024. They're not written in stone, and we can adjust and modify these as needed if issues do come up throughout the year that are more pressing and deserve our attention. So these are just kind of placeholders, and most of these, regardless of other issues coming to the table, coming to this commission, will most likely be discussed anyway. They're kind of placeholder every year. So this is a time for the commission to kind of discuss and see if there's anything else they would like to add to this work plan. Things that, yes, Commissioner G.
I would like to discuss addition of the GIS program. I don't know if that falls under any of these current categories, but I think that's something that our city needs.
Okay, and again, that would be, this is something that if the commission as a whole, as a body, is directing that way, that's certainly something we can do. Because you're right, it's something that could fall under a broad purview of some of these, but it's not a specific agenda item. I do think there's, there's good discussion to be had in that area, because it is a tremendous, you know, tool for us in public safety.
Sure, so I attended the GIS workshop held by the Los Angeles County. It's a big database, and I guess I should ask the mayor whether we have enough budget in it, but it would allow us to be able to track whatever we'd like to track. So for example, if we wanted to map your neighborhood, we could have people go from door to door and, you know, put down what resources people have. We can track other pieces of data as well, such as where, after we did the homeless count, where most of the homeless, or unhoused, sorry, where most of the unhoused stay, we can track whatever we want in this database and use it for future years. So that's my understanding of it. It's a limited understanding. Maybe the chief would have something to add about what GIS is.
No, you're exactly right, and GIS is currently being looked at through our planning and building department. They would be the primary users of this in tracking, plan reviews, hydrant location, water maintenance, and you're right, it's a layered, it's a program that's layered and allows us to have a layer within the whole GIS component where public safety could have a layer, and we could input, we can embed in that system whatever we would want to track. We've mentioned paramedic subscription, a database for our elders, our more vulnerable population. A good example of this is during COVID. Most, most of what you were looking at in tracking and numbers during COVID was a GIS application, when you were looking at, you know, exposures in different communities, actually globally, right? There was, there was GIS applications that were tracking world numbers. That would be a good, a good example of what this can do for us.
I have one, oh, I have one more comment. I believe there is a, the main program that most cities use is called SSE. And I do have the contact for that person. I have not emailed the whole commission on it yet, but plan to construct an email soon. They, the consultant for that particular company has mentioned that the pricing is due to how detailed we want to be, and I believe it is on the order of hundreds of thousands. So again, I don't know if our city budget is amenable to that, whether we feel it's enough of a priority, and there are also more basic packages that we can start off with. So what does everybody think about it?
If I may intervene for a moment, it is not advised that the commission email out commission subject matter with more than a quorum. That would be a Brown Act violation. So we ask that if there is something you'd like to share with the commission, staff will send it out to everyone, but as a BCC, so that there isn't a reply-all issue.
I have a concern on this. And my concern on this is, even though I find that it would be very necessary and helpful in helping the community, I also like to know if any of this would infringe on people's privacy, and also on any kind of, what you call, I guess privacy would cover it. I just don't want this to become a hot bottom button issue for some people to say, oh, they're trying to turn this into a police state, which is the last thing we want. The only thing we are interested in is helping the citizens of South Pasadena. But we have to be very careful on how we go about it, how we word it. I, I am more, more, I'm for it a hundred percent, but I just want to be very careful about how we go about it. We, and I know the chief brought up this subject on having this thing that would record license plates. I mean, to me, it's like the most inconsequential thing. It's not infringing on anybody's rights. And then I read on the newspaper, people saying, oh, no, they're trying to track us. They're trying to do this to that and do that. And to me, it's absurd, and that's how they caught this guy that killed five people in about a month ago. So I mean, there, there you have it. The program was, is excellent. And, but we just have to be very careful about how we go about it. But as I say, I'm a hundred percent for it.
Yeah, and your point's well taken, and again, GIS systems are pretty standardized in communities throughout, you know, the country. And so any implementation and any utilization of a tool like this does get vetted pretty substantially through our legal team, through our city attorney, to make sure that we are not violating any HIPAA-protected information or any personal information that is not subject to, to public review.
Yeah.
I have a quick question, Chief. In terms of, just to sort of wrap up our thoughts on the GIS, is there a specific topic in the work plan where that would fit? Or is this something that would be kind of an overlay as we look at different things?
You know, there's a couple, actually, as I look at it, because GIS is used in multiple as we look through the work plan. It could be used in looking at our unhoused population. It could be used to, in fire prevention and public safety applications. You know, school safety. There's, there's a lot of applications that can be embedded in a GIS system that just simply helps us track and manage information. That's really all it does. Especially in the emergency operations center. Typically, emergency operations will have a GIS, GIS division under planning and logistics, and they monitor that and they use that as a tool specifically during a disaster as well. So in looking at this, probably for me, I know it's late in the year, so I don't mind starting the conversation earlier, but under earthquake and disaster preparedness, for me, and as far as fire goes, that would be the most seamless application for fire is under emergency prep and disaster prep.
So I do know that it takes at least one or two staff members to operate such a system. We can have scouts help with gathering data. If you just need a volunteer to do that as part of their Eagle Scout project, so that we don't incur that many expenses, but you would have to budget for an extra staff member, at least one. And I think to trial the program, I think earthquake and disaster preparedness would be a great one to target, and we just see if we like it. It's not something that we have to dedicate to year after year. If it feels, if it feels like it doesn't work for our city, we don't use it. So I wanted to see if the rest of the commission would want to discuss this, and if so, I would like to make a motion to put it on our agenda sometime in the year.
I think on the motion.
And you're giving staff direction. So I don't even know if that requires a vote of the commission. They're giving direction for us to bring it back, so. And that's really what this discussion is, is looking and giving us direction and suggestions to what you would like to see come back on the final, the final work plan for 2024. And just to follow up a little bit, when you talk about extra staff, as I said earlier, this is already being looked at in planning and building. We're entering into a new budget cycle. We should have a lot more information on where the city's going to land on implementing a GIS system that's available to all departments in the city. And most likely, the individual that would be overseeing that would be running it from, would be overseeing it from planning and building. And then each department would have a representative that would, that would oversee their layers within the GIS system.
May I ask a question? Allison, you said that we could, Beth, we could get some additional information, because I have a general understanding of the GIS program, and I would like either Beth or someone to let, give us all some more background.
Sure, yeah, if Commissioner G would like to email the info she has over.
I would like to email the info, but I know I need permission first before I can do that, and I wasn't sure how to go about it.
Yeah, if you just want to share it with staff, we can send it out to the commission, like I said, just to make sure everyone's BCC'd, so that we aren't, we aren't violating the Brown Act.
Great, I'll include some of the, I'll upload some of the brochures that I got from the event that I attended in November.
Perfect.
So, good morning, commissioners. I just wanted to clarify that PD has a separate GIS system. We're in the process of implementing that, and that was part of our CAD and RMS purchase of last year. Implemented into that, or included into that was a GIS system. So our needs are a little bit different than what fire's using it for and what planning, but it is certainly something that we've talked about from a city perspective, that we could share information and create layers for each of the individual departments. So unrelated, I came a little bit late, but I just wanted to clarify that.
I have a question. Wouldn't this, actually, you're talking about what you use at the police department is different, whatever, but doesn't that actually work commingle, commingle with what the, what the fire department does? Because if we're talking about helping people and house people, and also in case of an emergency, earthquake and whatever, wouldn't both agencies, both groups be working out of the same information?
I think we're talking about two different things here. So one is fire would have to be on our GIS system, which includes our CAD and RMS system. It is built specifically for the system we bought. Now, we can create layers, and a layer would be, we could create a fire layer with whatever information they need. For instance, for PD, we would have addresses, we'd have maps of the cities, we might have specific information related to crime, to, and I'm really simplifying this, burglary alarm systems and things that PD would use on a common day-to-day basis. So yeah, we could certainly do it that way. That's why there's different layers. Public Works might put in a layer of water mains. Building might put in, building and planning might put in a layer of buildings that are retrofitted, something of that nature. So, but the problem is, is it really, everyone needs to have their own system, and then the mapping, and then we can share that data as long as they're compatible. So it's, we're talking about potentially multiple different software systems. If you think about it this way, it's kind of like using your iPhone or an Android. We need to make sure that they work together so that the systems are compatible. So it's something as we move forward that we're looking at. We've been exploring a little bit more with planning and public works, because I think they use a little bit more, and we've talked about it, we're just not there yet. PD, I think, is a little bit ahead, only because, as I mentioned, we purchased that CAD and RMS system, which is really the nucleus of the police department. It's all our information comes through that system. So we were ahead of the game when we purchased it. We've got the mapping already developed. Now it's a matter of implementing it and then creating those data layers, as I mentioned. So certainly, fire could jump in. The only difference I see, and I don't want to speak for Chief Riddle, the only difference I see is, is fire is on a different system with Virdugo Dispatch. So I'm not sure what system they use and if it would be compatible, but it's certainly something we'd look at.
One thing that crosses my mind that is going on right now in the city is a very massive project trying to do the switch system, and that disrupts tremendously the traffic. And I think that would be some very good information to have into the system. What streets would be affected by this and whatever? And also, of course, what Commissioner G was saying before on the project for the keeping the safety of the students and crossing those streets. That really is so important. You know, the, I could hear how how interested, how involved many of these parents are to keep the safety of their children, and it's such a valid point. So if we could keep that also as part of the information that we keep in there, so keep that always on the forefront, that to let them know that we did not forget them, that we are looking after all that.
There's been a number of charrettes and conversations related to the traffic, and specifically the crossing guards. Public Works has kind of taken the lead on that, because it involves traffic engineers. But there's been quite a, quite a bit of public outreach, but yes, we will absolutely keep that on the work plan. Commissioner G.
Yes, may I propose that we agendacize this item earlier on in the year? So that we have a broad basis of looking at what things we can embed, and the desired outcome would be to agree on what data should be embedded and to choose the right vendor. I mean, I understand we already have a vendor, but I'd like to know from a PowerPoint presentation what exactly we already have, and you know, just more details. So may we agendacize this item earlier?
As I was sitting down, looking at there, I actually was saying, under a certain map your neighborhood in April, that would be a good placeholder to put a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation on GIS, so everyone has a good understanding of what it is, what it's capable of, and where the city's currently at. And then we can, it'll, it'll probably be a placeholder discussion that follows us through this current work plan and other areas that get touched. But we could do a PowerPoint presentation with this cert overview.
Thank you, and I have to step away, but I appreciate the discussion today.
I have one question. So I appreciate you raising it. I'm not familiar with it, so this sounds like a great opportunity for us to all learn about some of the systems that sounds like are already in place, or maybe options for the future. But the one thing that keeps ringing through my brain is, is this an internal system only, or is this something that you can kind of let the public plug into? It sounds like it's mostly internal, but I want to make sure that as we're having these discussions, people aren't thinking, oh, the whole city can see this data points, because I know that's been a push in the past for a little more transparency in data.
Great question, and GIS systems can be built out, you know, we're the gatekeepers of the information. And so what's legally, you know, to, to the chair's point, that what information is legally to be shared with the public, we can do that, and we can actually invite input coming in, especially on our opt-in programs. Mapping your neighborhood, for instance, would be a good example of that. So absolutely, it's a system that can be designed to be output information to the community, as well as receiving information coming in to help build out your, your information database.
Okay.
But again, the city is the gatekeeper of that information and has the legal right to decide through the city attorney what is, what is acceptable and what is not.
Yep.
This is a discussion of the work plan. This is a draft. Once we kind of have a discussion and the, and the chair and the commission is comfortable on where it lies, we will bring the, the final draft to you next meeting, and we'll vote on it then and implement the 2024 work plan.
Okay.
And you can see, there's really no agendaized them for January anyway. It's just a discussion of this plan, and we can bring it back at the final and go for there.
All right. Yes, we move on to as communication, city council liaison. Councilman Cattori.
No need to sit down, but for the February item, the roof tell us, are we still planning to do the special meeting to review that?
Yes, so that'll be a special meeting. We're, we're looking at scheduling it. We're, we're going to be reaching out to all the commissioners as well as the city council, so it'll be a joint meeting. We're looking at having it on a separate day, not on a council day.
Okay.
Possibly a, let's say Wednesday? Was it Monday or Wednesday? So it's still in the early stages of planning. Obviously, we want to make sure that, one, all the commissioners are available to council and the community engagement portion of that is intact. And then we're, we're looking at having it here at the council chambers, but as, as we start reaching out and inking dates and getting confirmations, we'll, we'll make it available as soon as possible. Obviously, we want that public engagement portion to get it out as soon as possible. So the more, the more participation that we have with it, the better, the better results in that.
Okay.
And I did want to follow up on your question, though, as far as GIS system being internal, and as Chief Riddle said, it really, the city is the gatekeeper. Understand, when we're talking about the police department, though, that is a little bit different than when we're talking about fire or public works. It's a little more confidential in nature. So while we can push out some maps and some information, a lot of the information on our internal system is confidential just in nature in terms of we could have HIPAA information on there, we could have private information for residents that maybe they opt into something, something that we typically would not release out, but if it's, if it's available, we're happy to make that available to the public so that they can see perhaps, and this is just an example, crime trends or crime reporting, those types of things. But so it's a little bit more limited what we're talking about.
I think the more that we can kind of just note in our discussions about the systems, you know, what can be made public and what cannot, it would be helpful just so we're managing expectations generally, because I know there has been a push for more transparency in data, which is wonderful, and I think everybody agrees that's the goal. But I just don't want there to be kind of confusion with, oh, this is all, can be all transferred to the public too. So I think if we can couch discussions in that framework, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Councilman Cattori.
Thank you, Chair, members, staff, chiefs. First item I want to talk about was on your list, the homeless outreach program, and again, it's two separate programs. They were funded through the COG, and now we get money from the state and federal government versus operated by the, kind of overseeing the contracts, the San Ysid Valley Council governments, the 34 cities we're part of. Been working on that for several years. So one is operated by La Cada, LA, Center for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, which has been around for 50 years, but they focused on drug abuse, those type of things. We have for years. Now they're in the outreach and unhoused homeless issues. So they run the two vans operating in our city. So they run the two two vans operating in our city, the pilot project for the entire San Gabriel Valley, first in LA County. So they run the mobile crisis again, I'll keep repeating, there's two, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Forty hours we have us, Arcadia, San Marino. Montebello pops in a little bit on the weekends. And that's the mobile crisis response. They wait for the calls, kind of an ambulance type of service, which I wanted to try to get amended. And on Mondays, we've got a from nine o'clock today till three, a mobile outreach van. They're not waiting at the corner of Huntington and Rosemead for the calls from one of the three cities. They're actually out there on our streets right now, driving around at the train station. They'll be at Holy Family when I get back there at 11 o'clock as people start showing up for food, the the unhoused, the homeless. Right now, we're feeding the people that are housed, just can't quite make the payment, so they need the food. They'll show up, we'll give them some bags, pre-wrapped lunches. They'll go out to the train station, to Garfield Park. I called them, I think I mentioned last time from Rite Aid, when the gentleman was their aunt and was trying to get him some help. They're they're pretty good, two gentlemen, and I forget what their what their license or not. But so they're just doing well. So at the last council meeting, I'd asked, I want to I want to do a presentation. I want La Cada to come in here, want them to talk to the council. I want the council and the public to be able to ask questions because they'll be coming up for renewal, their contract, probably May, June, get approved right before July. And again, I I want to look at the model, how many responses they had, how many calls they had. Looking at what they've had so far, it's usually 19, it depends, 19 to 20 last couple of months. But again, that's only like for the three cities. That's not much, that's like four a week. So it's it's just not enough. Calls are, you know, they're waiting and some calls may take eight hours, some may take 15 minutes. They said the average response to a call was two hours. When they add up 40, 80, 120, 160 hours, there's a lot of time that follow up, but I would wish I I, what I want to see is them in our city. I want the van here, want them sitting with the dispatch and police department. I want them going around, so if you see them, oh, I can call, the co-response model. So if we examine it, I want an evaluation, I want the council to assess it, I want to hear from you, our staff. And before we renew it, what do we want to change? Do you want to tweak it at all? Because this is a pilot. You know, some staff at COG kind of, they're they're good staff, but they did it, but they're not on the ground every day. I want us to look at it because the money will run out someday. And we're at least good for another year after this. We got money from Portantino and the feds, but if it does well, it's going to spread. So what model do we want? And then also the county's supposed to be getting more people, so we got to coordinate. So just keep that in mind. And I, you know, just looking at it, I like maybe some more time of the outreach instead of just kind of sitting there. So just more a more active type of program. So we'll look at that. Again, there's a model in Orange County called Be Well. They actually respond and also go out to calls. They're at outreach and kind of both. When the lieutenant I spoke to him a few weeks ago, they that's what they do. And we went down there, rode along, went to the beach, they waited for calls, we went to the beach, talked to the people that were unhoused. So keep that in mind as we look at it. There's other issues that may affect us in the future. I sit in the foot, you're representative on the Foothill Gold Line Construction Authority for the extension we're building right now. And it'll be finished this year, this December. We're we're on time, we're ahead of time. It'll be finished maybe by November, but it's supposed to be, we're we're done by December. Almost all the stations are 90% 95% complete. The overhead cantenary system, we've moved all the lines for MetroLink, one freight line, our tracks are complete. So it's it's getting there. We're going to be done November, December. We'll do some testing with the contractor, our agency. And then late December, January, we turn over to Metro. They do their testing for a couple of months and then it opens the paid passenger service. The next cities where it ends right now is Azusa Pacific University Citrus College, a terminus. First one will be another mile and a half to Glendora downtown. Then it'll cross under the over or under the 210 and then under the 57 freeway, the downtown San Dimas, which is a beautiful station, beautiful Western motif. If you've never been to downtown San Dimas, it's really going to be opening up some beautiful cities like ourselves. Then they'll get beautiful downtown Laverne, literally 100 feet from the campus of University of Laverne and then 100 feet to downtown Laverne. Final terminus of this project will be Pomona, the northern part off the 210, co-sharing with the MetroLink station. Not the best part of Pomona, but that's where they wanted to end it because Laverne didn't want a terminus. And you probably know why, because the terminus in Azusa, as the chiefs know, at night when the last train stops, 15, 20 people get off and start meandering through the town. So we're all talking it right now and I know the the police and elected officials, what happens when it opens up? It opens up a lot new people and a lot new issues. So I know the chiefs are talking about this because we're really pushing whatever LA County or Metro does on policing in the next year or two. They bring it in-house or they keep the sheriffs or they boot out the sheriffs. We're not sure what they're going to do, but it's going to affect all of us. And if we get more money from the state, which we're supposed to, I don't know with this budget now, the state, $60 billion or $80 billion in you know, they're not a balanced budget, that if we do get the money, $700 and some million dollars, we we're ready to design and build the next phase to Clermont and then to San Bernardino County, Montclair. That opens up more issues. So we're ready to go, we've got design build ready. If we get that money, it's ready to start. At the same time, we're finishing this, that will be going parallel. Chief will talk about the police electrification program, but again, excited. You've probably seen some of the vehicles on the street already. I was just at Holy Family right before I got on the bike to come here. One of the fully outfitted Tesla Model Ys went by, didn't even hear it, just right by. Real exciting, I saw a couple, you know, the weekend, I saw, I forget the officer's name, pulling into CVI, Rite Aid. It's great to see him out there. Chief will give you an update, but we're going to hopefully set up a last for a meeting with chief and and staff next week. We can really get a a date for our event to bring this out to the world. So I'm excited to see him out there patrolling, we're kind of testing still. And it's it's three parallel projects going on. We we knew they would, you know, you couldn't kind of coordinate them because everything's a little different. We're probably the first doing it all at once. But you've got the police electrification of the fleet, you've got our infrastructure we're putting in to support it, even though we've got some level three chargers on on site down near Royal and right in our fire department. Thank you, chief. And we've got charging station right there. And we're going to have one in South Pasadena. And I've been working on this with the new, the owner and the new, what's going in there at the former Vons site. It's going through permitting now, just takes a long time. Doesn't cost them a penny, doesn't cost us a penny, Tesla puts it in and make the money on charging. So the infrastructure is, I spoke to Edison last week, they had to call me, my role as AQMD board member because they're trying to get a permit at Catalina Island to put in some new, better, less emitting diesel generators. So we're trying to work with them on that, they've got to go through us. And I said, by the way, I said, let's discuss also when we have our meeting, the electrification project here, how's that moving forward? They had good news, they said the switch gear is probably going to come earlier than they thought. That's the the projects with the supply chain, it was backed up for months, if not a year. So now this is coming in several months ahead of schedule, they think. So that might be done a little sooner later this year instead of September, maybe a couple of months sooner. And the final third part of the parallel project is the microgrid across the street. We'll have battery, energy, storage and also solar. Those quotations are going out right now for Clean Power Alliance, which we're part of, one of a number of cities doing that. So the three projects are coming together. Really nice is we really, you know, we'll have the fleet all done very soon. We can charge anywhere basically nearby within, I mean, the boundaries on the boundary of our city. We charge there, if there's a call, within 10 seconds, they're back in the city. Jump right back on the freeway right there entrance, you're over by State Street, AA Hardware, we're back in. So any questions, Chair, board members, be happy to answer.
Uh, yeah, how soon do you think they'll start working on the Vons charging station?
It's it's going through permitting. So I, you know, I've been working on this for over a year. I set up the meeting with the owner. I said, listen, I, you know, we we, I've been working with my cities, I represent an AQMD. And I told him I was just at an opening, we opened one in West Covina. And at the opening, I talked to the executives for West Coast for Tesla. And I said, you know, I I used to have the Model Y, family did, we use it, but there's used to be no places. I see you're opening more in the San Gabriel Valley, he says. This was last year, San Gabriel Valley said was a desert. But now they're starting to open more and more and they're just looking for spaces. Sierra Madre approved one about three months ago. They opened another one near the West Covina area. They just, they just need more chargers. So they're they're just looking for spaces. So it may take a year or longer, you just, you got to go through the process. Edison with their infrastructure, just talking to Edison, the engineer just retired, he's one of the volunteers. And he says, yeah, that's our issue, we we want to do this, but we're just just the supply chain, getting all the all the the devices, takes time.
Yeah, well, well, the for me, the way I look at it is one of the main main things people would look at as far as going somewhere to charge their car is their safety. And there is no safer place that across from the police station here. But there is only room for very few cars there. So I think the one on Vons would be also very, very safe as opposed to something down there, a Royal that is like, you know, you you go there after six or after five and and you're wondering, what am I doing here? So it that is so important. If we want this this project off the ground is to offer safety to the people, to the public.
Yeah, we we're trying to, and we did look close by. I sat down with Tesla and we, I think Sergeant Abdullah was on the phone and we looked at a couple of sites, even the site where the theater is, which would go into affordable housing. And they just said it wasn't big enough, it wasn't accessible. They really liked the Vons. And so I put it together, a meeting with the owner, Mr. Wagner, his his son, Wagner died, his son, Dr. Wagner. It took several times to convince them, but I said, let me tell you, every station, every, you know, shopping center, anywhere that has this, they just get more business, your business is going to increase because every Tesla driver goes there, they're not there for more than half an hour. Usually it's 20, 30 minutes, you're going to go and get a coffee, they're going to do a sandwich, they can do their shopping and they're out. And that turns over 20 every hour, every 30 minutes. So you're going to have 200, 400 more people that day that never have gone to your shopping center, they're going to go there now. And I talked to people in San Marino, they don't have one. I remember has a couple down on Fremont, but there are not many. Pasadena has a couple, but you go there some nights, sometimes the night and it's packed. So it's going to be great. And there's others, I understand there's other charging stations, not Tesla, but other companies like ChargePoint or somebody or EV Go, which is over here, are going through a permitting process also, maybe a Bank of America or a facility over there. So I'll tell you, when those went in, I worked on those two to get in with grants and stuff for years. And remember when he first put them in, I got complaints from merchants, I won't say their names, but how can you put these in here? They're taking away two parking spaces. Now in the last six months, I'm getting complaints, we don't have enough chargers. So you can't win. So we're going to try to get more in, we're working on it.
Thank you. Staff Liaison Communications next.
Good morning again. A couple of different things, one I wanted to touch a little bit about the the electric vehicles is, as Councilmember Cattori mentioned, we do have some on patrol right now and we're expecting some every week. And we we were hoping to be fully implemented by the end of February. So you will notice them going around town a lot more often. We have a meeting, just to give you a kind of an idea of how this is catching on, is we have a meeting next week with Riverside County sheriffs. They're looking at implementing them. So fairly large agency, over 2,000 vehicles. I don't expect them to go in all at once. They're looking at it from probably a more modified approach, looking at admin vehicles and then moving forward. But that's still a significant jump. And as we look at Riverside County, there's a number of other smaller agencies in the Los Angeles space and that have also reached out. So I think this is going to be something that we're seeing a lot more of. And to to the point of the council member and and your point, Commissioner, is the charging stations, the infrastructure is the biggest portion of this. So as as more and more cities are taking these vehicles on, the requests from from the different vendors in Tesla is to increase their charging structure availability. So that's something we're working on as well. Separately, last week I mentioned, and and Commissioner, I believe this touches a little bit about what you were talking about, the GIS system and what's public and what's not. We collected our, over the last year, our, the police department's RIPA data and we've been doing an analysis on it. We made a dashboard on the police department's website, you can go to that. I believe this will cover a lot of the information that people are asking for in terms of transparency. This is all the data we collect on the individuals, we stop where we stop them, the demographics. This can be found on the police department's website. Last last meeting, I mentioned that we were working on it, it is now up and live. And if you look at it, you can go up at the top, it talks about the reasons for the stop, traffic violations, 2,852, reasonable suspicion and going on down, the types of violations, the crime types, the locations, the time of detentions. And then if you look over to the far right, the gender, race, age. And then can you go to the next tab, please? And then we go to arrests as it's loading. And then you can see again, the location or the the race and residency of those that we come in contact with. If you look, Los Angeles and other cities, they're predominantly locations or residence locations of of those that we come in contact with. And then over on the side, it it has a different breakdown. This is our like, I'm sorry, go ahead, go to the next one. The license plate reads the flock camera system that we implemented, how many hits we're getting. And hits is an indication of when a vehicle that is wanted either for, could be for a crime, it could be for a missing person investigation, something of that nature. How many hits we're getting, where we're getting them and how many arrests are based off of that. So there's a lot of information there. Each one of those tabs, I believe, is, you can click on them, correct, to to get more information? I'm sorry? Can you go back to arrest or or show them the interaction? So this is available to all the members of the public, you can go on our website. It it's under what tab? Community. Community Dashboard. So if you go on the police department's website, Community Dashboards, and this will come up. And then everyone can look at the information and see what the police department's doing. It's it's pretty labor intensive, so we're going to up update this every quarter. But this is the latest that we have and it went live this week. So there will be a presentation to the City Council. We're trying to schedule that sometime mid-February. So I encourage all of you to be there. Not only will it be a presentation on on the data in and of itself and how it works on the dashboard, but then what does the data mean? So I think it's important that we understand, you know, we can see the information, but really, what does it entail? How how do we interpret that? What is the analysis of it? And then there'll be a question and answer session. So as soon as we get the the date inked for that, we will make sure to get it out to everybody so that you can be a part of that. And that is all I have, if anybody has any questions.
Just. Lieutenant, did you have, were you going to give us an update on?
So we wanted to have you take a look at one of the fully implemented patrol cars. So after the meeting, it'll be out front as you're leaving, you can stop by and take a look. Yes, sir.
Is it the one that you you said you're talking about one, right? That is fully implemented?
This is the one that is is fully implemented and out on patrol right now.
Oh, okay, one, are you waiting for a second one to come in?
We're expecting one every week till the end of
Every week?
Till the end of February so that we can fully outfit the department and get them all on patrol. So really, it's it's about timing. As as the council member mission mentioned, there's a supply chain issue, but then there's also upfitting time and and whatnot. So we're we're anticipating about a one-week turnaround before we're fully implemented. Give or take the end of February is when we're expecting everything to be in.
Okay, thank you.
But a- any questions on the data, the RIPA data?
I had a quick question, chief. Was there anything that was unexpected when you were looking at this result?
No, very, very expected in terms of what we've been seeing over the the, over the last two years. I think it's, you know, there's always going to be disparities, but disparities, and I think some people will say, well, there's a disparity, it's a bias. I think they're two different things. And when we look at, you can look at predominantly it's Hispanic individuals that we're arresting and predominantly out of the city of Los Angeles. Well, I don't think you can compare South Pasadena demographics to our arrestees. Where if you look at South Pasadena is considered a pass-through city. How many people are coming through our city every day? Well, we know back in 2014, there is a Public Works survey, a traffic survey, and they estimated about 110,000 people coming through our city every day. With the city of 25,000 residents, that's a significant jump. Where are all those people coming from? They're coming from Los Angeles County. Well, if we look at the demographics of Los Angeles County and Southern California, it's predominantly Hispanic. So that's what I would expect to see. So it's it's no surprise coming from from where we're at now. It actually just kind of reaffirms what we were thinking. But we really want to get into the nuts and bolts of it. And and when we do our presentation is take the opportunity to answer any questions and go through all the different, the various tabs and highlight, you know, where we're hitting the mark, where we can improve and why we're seeing the the types of crimes and stats that we are seeing, so. Yes.
I want to say congratulations because I know this was a big project and it's great that it's live and available and and that's wonderful. I want to say congratulations, because I know this was a big project, and it's great that it's live and available, and that's wonderful. I think that answers a lot of people's push for more transparency. And one question I have is on the RIFTELIS. I'm assuming this has been kind of done in coordination with some of their recommendations, or is it completely separate?
It's actually completely separate, however, they did recommend to do a project like this, but it was done completely separate. One of the challenges with a small department, one, this is very labor intensive, we actually had to go out to a separate third-party vendor to help gather the information and create this dashboard. So when you're talking about a department that is thirty-five, thirty-six officers with our vacancies. We're actually pulling someone out of the field to do this, and remember, we're talking about a police officer, we're not talking about a project manager. So that's the challenge when we talk about a small city in general. But now we're talking about some really significant data here, so we actually went out, we got a third-party vendor to help create this. They're going to be the ones presenting it, because they did the analysis on it. But it is, like I said, very labor intensive, so it took us a little bit longer than we wanted, if we could have got it out a little faster, I would have liked to see that, but. That's one thing I would ask the community to. Keep in mind, when we create these projects and we're seeing different things pop up across the nation is. Obviously, we want to be transparent, we want to be on the cutting edge, but we also are also limited by our. Our capacity to do some of these things, so. But we are, nonetheless, we're excited to get it out. I think it's a pretty robust system, based on what I've seen some of the other law enforcement agencies have, you know, there are different variations, but I think this is. This hits the mark certainly for this city and the community expectations, I think there's a lot of information on there to digest. And it certainly will create for a good discussion.
So when the recommendations from the assessment come out in February, if it goes as planned. If they have further recommendations, this could be further customized or?
Absolutely, we can tailor this to whatever is needed, based on some of the recommendations, and of course, what's available for. PRAs or public records requests, there are certain limitations to that, the law is pretty specific. That's another thing I wanted to touch on, is there's a lot of talk in the community about the police department not being transparent, but I think some of it's very pointed. By certain individuals to get around legal, legal means and legal justifications. It's very clear what the law says, what can and can't be released. And I think some people have used that to try to circumvent the law. But bottom line is, we're only allowed to release certain information. And once that PRA request is made, we'll release it, as long as it's, as long as there's a legal justification to do it, so.
Well, this is a big jump forward.
Yes.
Yeah. And then my other, oh, one thing you mentioned was it will be updated quarterly, I understand that it takes, you know, data and staffing. And everything to do the updates, but I'm sure one thing we may hear is, that's not enough, that's not frequently enough, so.
And that's something we're trying to balance, so the same patrol officer that is doing this was also the project manager for our CAD and RMS system. Now, any other city probably would have hired a professional project manager, we just don't have the luxury of that, having a small city. So I have a police officer who had some computer background that is doing this in between handling calls. So when we're talking about funding, and this is certainly not a funding speech. But when we're talking about groups that want to defund the police, when we're talking about, hey, you need to do more of this and more of that. There's only so much give and take that the police department can do. So this is a great example of how a small city is struggling, where we are taking patrol officers in between handling your burglary call or your homeless call. To come in and manage a billion-dollar computer system and try to implement it.
Yeah, well, it may be helpful to highlight that, I mean, I would assume it wouldn't be, I mean. Obviously, it's another hire or another staff person with a specific set of qualifications. With this technology and data analysis and all of that, but it might be helpful to highlight that as we go through the next, you know, cycle.
Certainly in the budget, but I think this will be covered under the Raftelis report in terms of some of their recommendations and. Not, it's, the police department is not just about responding to calls for service. Certainly, that's the primary job of the police department, but there's so much more, as we're talking about now, that are behind the scenes, that require the professional support. So I think that's some of the things that Raftelis will talk about.
Great, I look forward to it.
Great, thanks. Thank you, yes, sir.
Just quickly, a quick reminder for our commission, and as well as whoever wants to know about this. How many officers we have currently in the South Pasadena station. As opposed to how many officers they have in Beverly Hills. Do you give us those figures?
Yeah, that's a great point, and keep in mind, they're two very different cities, however, they're very similar in size. Recently, we had an opportunity for some of the commissioners to go to Beverly Hills and look at their real-time crime watch center. And we were talking about the staffing levels, and so Beverly Hills, I want to say they were about one hundred and fifty officers. South Pasadena were budgeted for thirty-seven, but currently, we have about twenty-seven actually working, so we have roughly ten vacancies, so.
So what that means, you're a stretch to the max.
We're pretty thin. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick updates for fire. So just a quick update, we had talked about outreach opportunities for our paramedic subscription program in a few meetings past, so. We've been working with, now that we have our new management assistant in the front office, Kevin. We've been working with the city manager's office and developing a flyer, and that flyer is going to be going out in our municipal billing in February. To all of our residents with information on the program. An informational bulletin was also sent out through the senior center, and a message from the mayor. Again, introducing the program for those that are not aware of it. And the city manager's office is also helping us with different outlets of social media to make sure that we get the word out. We have definitely seen an uptick in our applications for it, so the word is starting to get out, and we're hoping that'll continue to increase as we do these other outreaches, so. Quick update on staffing as well, fire department went through just a recent. We had one firefighter paramedic leave, he was a newer firefighter paramedic, decided it wasn't for him. But so we're down three positions. But with that, we have a current recruitment, we have one in backgrounds that's clearing, and they should be coming on the floor in early February. And then we have a current recruitment where we actually got seven lateral applications and six entry level. And the application period was only open for two weeks, because we had a, we had a good idea that there was some good laterals that we're interested in working for, so. Our goal is to be fully staffed again by March of this year. And prepare for some promotional exams and some retirements this year, so. That's good news, as far as I see it, we were kind of in a, in a, in a holding pattern with some, with some injuries that developed that were unanticipated injuries that are going to lead to retirement, so. That was good to get a good recruitment effort. And just the final update. We had crews assist Pasadena in the recent Rose Bowl and Rose Parade. We had individuals at the command level, as well as our rescue ambulance, with our reserve rescue ambulance, with two firefighter paramedics working the parade. And the game, and it was, I was happy to see it was pretty uneventful. So that was, that was a success, it's really good for our personnel to get up there and be able to engage in large events like that. And, you know, really, it's an all-hands-on-deck, behind the scenes on that event, I'm sure PD had some involvement as well. PD and fire from all across L.A. County assist Pasadena in that endeavor, so. That was good, that it was a safe event, and really, that's it, starting off twenty twenty-four, pretty quiet, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner comments? Any Commissioner comments? None for me, well, maybe we could adjourn the meeting now?